Ladies and gentlemen, let me welcome all of you to our meeting tonight. We do have two meetings right up front. And before we get started, I'd like to ask if, and those who are here tonight who were planning to stay for the storage facility on Ola Drive, which is 2014, 18-00014, that will, that has been canceled. And I'm going to ask our John McConnell, Donald, to share with us the reason why, background on that.
Yes, sir, thank you. The application for conditional use permit, CUP 18-00014, has been postponed till August 6. There was an issue with the required sign that is, needs to be posted in the property of the applicant for this proposed mini warehouse self-storage. So that item has been pulled and will be held at the JPH in August.
With that information on the record, let us move to the two items on our joint public hearing. And I'll ask, as we open a series of standalone Dr. Public hearings, I'll ask Martin to give us some staff report on the status and our process.
Yes, sir. Up for tonight, we'll have two items. The first will be a zone change on Bardette Drive for Neighborhood Services to General Commercial. The second item will be UDC text amendment for improvements required upon expansion and related planning triggers. Each item has a public meeting or hearing conducted as follow. There will be a call to order, staff report, applicant presentation. Then the public is welcome to come up and make comment on either support or opposition, too. Please be, come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Be brief and to the point within a three-minute timeframe. And then complete a public speakers card and give it to our recording secretary, who's holding one up right now. Counsel, commission, and staff will then have discussion. And then there will be an adjournment for each item. After tonight's joint public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hold their regular meeting to take a vote on the zoning item recommendation. Speaking at the P&amp;Z meeting is at P&amp;Z's discretion. And then the council, each item will go to council for a first and second consideration on September 17th and September 24th. So if you're here for those items, make sure that you pencil those dates in.
That information in the record. Let me add a couple of that. And I will open each one of our public hearings with a gavel, and I'll close it with a gavel. And if you have questions, we're not able to dialogue with you, but if you will go ahead and ask your questions, and one of the council members or town planning zoning members will respond to that, will ask that in your behalf. And remember that we're in the process of receiving testimony. We're not making a decision during this process tonight with the council and the planning commission in conjunction. That information in the record. Let me open a standalone Dr. Public hearing for Zone Change 18-0010. Ask the chairman of the planning commission to read into the record the purpose of this hearing tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Zone Change Application Zone 18-00010, a request of Luke Billyatt, applicant on behalf of Horace Scott Clark Owners for approval of a change in zoning classification from Neighborhood Services NS Zoning District to General Commercial GC Zoning District on approximately 0.6942 acres of land. General location is 5905 and 5909 Bardette Drive.
Okay, with that information in the record, let's move to item two on our collective agendas. Item A is staff report.
Sir, this is a request for approval of zone change from Neighborhood Services to General Commercial. Location is 5905 and 5909 Bardette Drive. Future land use plan shows this area as business commercial. The proposed use for the property is a landscape office and garden shop. There were no comments returned or phone calls for this zone change request. The code conformance table is as shown. We introduce a new color here that's kind of a mix between green and yellow to show that it's in process or that it, with the change, it will meet the code. So that's what the new color is there for. For instance, with the comprehensive plan, Neighborhood Services is not in conformance with business commercial, but the general commercial proposed zone is in conformance with business commercial. Bardette has plenty of right-of-way as a local street. The property for commercial use currently is not in conformance with the Unified Development Code. And changing from a residential use to a commercial use would require the addition of parking and landscaping. And with the addition of that parking, there would be plating, dumpster screening, and sidewalks that would also be required. The property is currently platted, but it would need an amending plat because it's two separate lots currently. And then the property does have access to city water and sewer. With that in mind, staff recommends approval of the requested change in zoning from Neighborhood Services to General Commercial on the approximate 0.6942 acre site for the following reasons, as shown in the criteria for approval from the Unified Development Code. This is a shot of the future lane plan for the properties showing business commercial. And then this is an aerial and zone showing the existing conditions of the site. And that completes staff's report.
Good, I appreciate that. Moving to application information case summary, item B, which applicant presentation. If applicant is here and would like to make a presentation, you're certainly welcome to do so. Use the podium over right over here. Thank you for being here. Give your name and address.
My name is Luke Billyatt. 5905 Bardette Street is what we're here for. I'm just here to answer any questions that council may have.
Good, sure, sir. We may do that. Thank you, sir, very much. Moving to item C. Staff having a wrap-up comments on this item?
No, sir.
No wrap-up comments, okay. Moving to item number three, which persons wishing to speak for or against this proposed request, I'll call on Mayor Protem.
Is there anybody wishing to speak either for or against this item? For a second time, is there anybody that in the audience wishes to speak?
Fill out a form if we had.
Yes, sir. Either for or against this item? Last call, is there anybody who wants to speak either for or against this item? All right, thank you.
Okay. That information in the record. Let's then move to item number four on our collective agendas. And I'm using the same agenda you have for the city council or council member, Cabo.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I think this zone change makes sense, and I have no further comments.
Councilmember Eaton.
No comment, Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I think the zone change does make sense. I'm for it. No comments.
Councilmember Hernandez.
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Little.
Prior to the meeting, I rode by there, and I think it makes perfect sense to make the zone change.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. So, welcome. I wish your business well.
Okay. Plan to commission, Mr. Chairman.
Daryl. Lanning. Commission doesn't have any comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Staff having the following wrap-up comments?
No, sir.
At this point. Let's move down to item number five, which will let me adjourn this particular standalone Dr. Public hearing, which I shall do at 6:39. I get the paper to turn here with me. public hearing number two. Mr. Chairman, would you read this into the record for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Purpose of hearing number two is amendments to Unified Development Code, UDC, number T28, Zone 18-0009. Request of the City of Pearland for proposed amendments to Section 4.1.3.2 of the UDC regarding improvements required upon expansion and related planning triggers.
That information in the record. Then let's move to item number two on our collective agendas. Information, the application information and case summary. Item 2A is staff report.
Yes, sir. This is, was a request brought on to us to bring some suggestions for UDC improvements as related to expansions on sites, and then the planning triggers that are developed from those expansions. The options that we've come up with as a set here include implementing a 10% cumulative lifetime expansion cap before full Unified Development Code compliance would be required. Removing the exception for facade requirements for buildings built prior to 1981. Currently, there's an exception built in that says that your building is older than 1981, then doesn't need to meet that requirement, and that would be removed. A change of occupant would not trigger any UDC compliance requirements, whereas a change of use would trigger Unified Development Code requirements for facade, parking, dumpster screening, landscaping, and buffers. A cumulative expansion of more than 10% of the existing square footage would trigger full UDC compliance, which would include facade, parking, dumpster screening, landscape, fencing, setbacks, buffers, and sidewalks, or any of those items which are not in compliance with today's standards. If 10% of the expansion equals less than 500 square foot, then full UDC compliance wouldn't be required. So what does all that mean? For example, if you had a 4,000-square-foot building and you expanded by 400 square foot, then full UDC compliance wouldn't be required because you're meeting the 10% expansion, but you're less than the 500-square-foot minimum. A cumulative expansion of less than 10% of the total square footage of an expansion where 10% of the total expansion is less than 500 square foot would trigger UDC compliance for setbacks, buffers, and facade. And that's mainly keeping in mind that our zoning districts establish setbacks and buffers, and we want to make sure that even if you're just adding a closet, that you're not increasing that encroachment. Number seven, the expansion of paved area for parking, or either paved area or parking over 3,000 square foot would trigger UDC compliance for facade, parking, dumpster screening, landscape, fencing, setbacks, buffers, and sidewalks. So we took that information and kind of ran a few test cases. The table below shows proposed Pearland ISD expansion projects and highlights which projects would require full Unified Development Code compliance under the proposed triggers. It's a little difficult to see, I know, but out of the 12 projects there, three, 10, 11, and 12 would require full UDC compliance because their percentage of expansion is over 10%. Also, under the proposed triggers, the previously approved helipad expansion at Speedshore would not have full UDC compliance because the expansion of the paved area is not greater than 3,000 square foot. This completes staff's report.
Okay. With the completion of that report, moving to item number B. Is there, anyone like to make a? Is the applicant here tonight? Okay. Would you like to make a report? You have the, you don't use the podium.
Thank you, sir. My name is, my name is John Posh. I'm the director of bond construction for Pearland ISD. I don't think technically we were the applicant on this one, though we were involved in some of the earlier discussions on this. And of course, we're, we were test case number one up there. So this, this certainly affects our bond projects, which is why we, we kind of got involved in it in the beginning. So in this bond that Pearland ISD is doing, there are basically 12 buildings that we are expanding. We're not doing any new buildings in this bond, so it's just expansions. Most of them percentage-wise, as a percentage of the building, are pretty small. As you've seen up there, there's, there are three of them, though, Dawson, Junior High West, and Junior High East, that would, we would still be in full compliance. Now, on the others, we're, we're in substantial, we are in compliance with most of these because we've added parking just because it was, you know, we needed it as part of the project. So I would like to voice my support of this, not only just as a representative of the school district, but I think for all developers, the application of a percentage, whether it's 10%, and 10% seems like a reasonable number, seems like a more equitable way to metric rather than a square, a square footage metric. And that's it.
Can I get you to fill out one of these forms?
Sure.
And make sure you give it to the city secretary. Is there anybody else who wants to speak to this item?
Thank you so much for that. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity.
Good. Okay, let's move into the next item.
There's no staff wrap-up.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item, either for or against? Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item, either for or against? One last time, anybody else that would like to speak on this item, either for or against? No one, Mayor?
Moving in our agenda to item number four. Councilmember Moore, call on you to make your comments.
Thank you, Mayor. This was originally brought by councilmember Ordino and I because we wanted to see something done to help some of the businesses across the city and allow them to do additions or grow their business a little bit more without being tied down to doing a bunch of extra requirements that would cost, you know, a substantial amount of money to make an increase to their current facility. Originally, I would have liked to seen, or we originally proposed this to have 15% addition with another 15% addition to bring it up to a 30% of the square footage of the facility, of the lifetime of the facility. In this proposed tonight, it's removed the, it's removed that, so it's allowing a one-time 10%. I would like to see this be brought back to us with a one-time 10% and a total of 20% for the lifetime of the facility. If you go back to that slide that showed the school district stuff, so you see with this how much, how much this has helped the school district. Just imagine how much this could help some of the small businesses here in the city be able to grow their business as, as, you know, they get more customers and they can add on to their facility and actually not have to pay a bunch of extra money to do a facade requirement or shrubs or bushes or a sidewalk. Price of concrete's expensive. Not that these businesses shouldn't have to do this at some point in time, but if they're just adding a small square footage to their facilities, I don't understand why they have to fall under all this extra stuff. So I would be, I would like to see this come back to us with the proposed 10% and allow another 10% on it for the lifetime of the facility, bring it a total of 20%.
Okay. With that information in the record, Mr. Councilmember Little.
No comment, Mayor.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Obviously, wasn't here when this was first brought up, but I just wanted to say that I'm in favor, I think, of what councilmember Moore is saying as well from a small business perspective. I think that would be a good thing to give us a little bit more leeway to allow people to expand just a little bit more. I think 10%, you know, for a small business, I mean, it's, it sounds okay. I mean, it's obviously better than, than just requiring it across the board, but I think that giving people the opportunity to grow their business, obviously, is a good thing for the city overall. So I would just like to say that I support councilmember Moore's comments.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. So this most recent iteration is kind of being brought up about how some of the, the UDC requirements are being interpreted. Councilmember Moore and I had recently talked with staff about this. And my concerns initially was, there was a project that had a helipad, which is just flat work, and that, that helipad was being considered a structure. And because it was considered a structure, it was triggering compliance based on the 500-square-foot expansion. I think we're moving in the right direction. You know, now we are further defining what triggers flat work as a 3,000-square-foot expansion. But I think there's still a lot of holes. I'm in favor with us moving forward with what we have, but I don't think we're doing enough. I think what we're, what our problem is is that we keep whack-a-moleing these problems one at a time as issues come up. We haven't really taken a comprehensive look at not just the triggers for the UDC, but the triggers for all of our criteria. We discuss frequently the UDC amendments. We have a body that reviews the UDC amendments. We rarely discuss EDCM requirements and how that affects the development code. I rarely hear in council us talking plating requirements and what are that, what's, what's triggered by the requirement for a plat? I rarely hear us discuss anything related to the building code. And what, what triggers or written in the building code for them to come into code compliance? And how does that fit in with the UDC? And how does that fit in with the EDCM? We're just not dealing with this, in my opinion, in a comprehensive way. We just deal with it piece at a time and a problem at a time, only when it's brought up to us. Again, I like the idea where we're moving. I think it requires us to explain that we don't, or at least me as a council member, I don't want to see flat work like an outdoor basketball court, sidewalk, minor flat work expansion, let's say, for an outdoor storage facility for a large industrial complex. Don't want to consider that as a structure. It's not a structure. I deal with development projects on a regular basis, and I talk to developers, I talk to laymen. Nobody would consider that a structure. And would not read that to assume it was a structure and would not move forward with their planning of their development as if it was a structure. And it's a little frustrating when it's, when what seems like an obvious thing, which is flat work is not a structure, ends up triggering not just, well, is interpreted as a structure and then triggers some expensive requirements on top of that. And beyond that, you know, I've heard an earful for a while since I've been on council from people who have concerns about the development process. I had a recent conversation with a developer that was, or not a developer, but a developer's consultant who's on the third phase of a, of a project and has gone through three different plating requirements. Completely different, even though it's basically the same, it's in the same area dealing with the same thing. I'm in favor of us moving forward with this. I think the amendment that councilmember Moore has requested, I think it's fair. But I also want to move forward with, with us taking a broader approach to fixing some of these problems that we've had. We had some success with the CUP committee. We sat down, we had council members, we had P&amp;Z members, we had staff members, we had members of the community go through and talk about the issues that we're having and how do we, what do we all comprehensively want to do to fix it? I think that's where the path we need to go on with some of these changes to the UDC. Also bringing in the EDCM, also bringing in the building code. Just to give an example, I mean, I know that we asked for a drainage plan on a single lot plat. I don't know why. I don't know what we're going to do with a drainage plan on a single lot plat. It tells it to drain forward or follow the EDCM. But people who are doing a single-family residential development and they have to have a drainage plan, they got to go find an engineer that'll do it. I can tell you, there's not very many who will. And it's $2,500, $3,000 just for them to do a drainage plan that says drain the lot forward. I think what plat, what plat we're using and when? When, when are we using? When do we have a minor plat? If we codify that, make sure that we're utilizing that? When do we have a preliminary and final plat? Codify that. When are we using that? When is a drainage plan necessary for a plat? Because that's an expensive item. When's a traffic impact analysis necessary? And why would it be triggered with a plat or conditional on a plat? There's a lot of things I think we need to work through. So I guess to cut off, so I don't belabor the point any more than I already have, let's move forward with what we have. But I would strongly suggest, as both of our bodies, that we support a, a commission similar to what we did with the CUP, to start examining this process, that in the entire development process, more vigorously, and come up with more changes to some of the development processes that we've, that we've been, or the issues we've had with the development process that we've been seeing for some time now.
Councilmember Eaton.
No comment, Mayor.
Councilmember Cabo.
Would staff go back to the slide that shows recommendations? Can you clarify, are staff recommending all these? Do we need to run through these point by point to give you some thoughts?
This was all brought forward as a bulk set. So you can discuss them piecemeal? You can discuss them whole? It's your choice.
Let's go, let's go by, one by one.
Yeah, so I guess councilman Moore proposed that number one would be a, we'd take the 10% to 20% cap, lifetime cap. I'm in favor of that. Number two, removing the exception for facade requirements. So we're, so we'd be requiring older buildings to bring their facade up to the current standards?
Correct.
All right. I'm, I'm, I mean, that's kind of against what we've, we've talked about making it easier to expand. So I, unless I'm reading something wrong, I think I'd like to scratch that one.
I'd support that.
Change of occupant would not trigger any UDC compliance requirements? I thought that was currently the case now.
We wanted to make sure that all possible triggers were discussed, so that way we didn't create confusion by saying, by leaving something out or because it's triggers related to expansions. We just wanted to make sure that it was covered.
Okay. But as of right now, a change of occupant doesn't trigger?
Unless they're adding parking or doing some other building activity.
Right. Right.
Building activity.
But just, just a straight change of occupant doesn't by itself change anything?
One tax office to another tax office doesn't change anything. Correct.
So I'm fine with that. Change, number four, change of use. What's the current, how's the UDC speak to that currently?
The change of use didn't have any additional triggers that were put in here. The only difference is that facade was added in because we were taking into account number two.
Okay. If it was a non-conforming use, I believe that that could be a trigger, if it was a non-conforming use and they changed it to, if they attempted to change it to an additional non-conforming use. I think that some of the triggers were activated.
True, but if they were non-compliant, for instance, if they didn't have enough parking, if the building were a, come up off of them, had a bookstore, and it had a low parking count, and then they changed it to a restaurant, which has a higher parking count, that change of use would require, you know, parking and other things. So it's a little bit more of a in-depth discussion, when it gets into non-conformities, which includes a different chapter, or a different section in Chapter Two, than just the trigger-related portion.
And if I may, I think that leads to what I was saying, there's, it's just, it's an onion, there's so many layers, it's difficult to understand it. I mean, I wouldn't, I don't know if I would have gotten that interpretation from what it reads here, and when I read it in the UDC, I'm not sure I would interpret it the same way. Now I have to propose it, have my consultants propose it, bring it to you, and then I might find out after plans are middle, that you're interpreting as a change of use, and it triggers a bunch of other things.
And to me, that, that underlines the whole point, is, you know, I've been on council, listening to this lingo for five years, Trent's been on staff before, and, and we're still having a hard time just having the discussion, so what about the guy that's running a welding shop that's looking to expand? I, that's, this is the reason why there's so much frustration, so I, I hope we can get to a solution, unfortunately, it might end up being how we had to do the CUPs with a committee, but this is a prime example of why the small businesses are so frustrated, and we're trying to make it simple, more simple, and it's still tough. Anyway, to give you the rest of my thoughts, number five, cumulative expansion, I think that goes to 20%. I like the, the threshold being the, I guess, the greater of 10, of the percentage, or Six is the same thing, and seven, yeah, 3,000-square-foot, I'm, I'm fine with that. Yeah, so anyway, those are my, my thoughts on it, and I guess I'd like to see that we go ahead and continue to push this forward, to try to simplify it, but I think it may, to roll up our sleeves in the form of a committee of some sort, may make more sense in the long run.
So, can, can you explain, I, I guess I'm having trouble here with, okay, so it's a change of use, never mind. So for like the change of use, I mean, for number four, I mean, I would want to remove everything for the exception of the parking. So if it's a facility now, say it's a welding shop now, and tomorrow it's going to be a restaurant, what makes that different to put a facade, or dumpster screening, or landscaping, or buffers, if the building is already there and exists as it is? The only thing that I would see that would really need to be changed would be the parking.
Increases in parking come with increases in cars, increases of lights from cars, the need for better screening, the need for better fences. Bring more people to one spot, you want to give a little bit more buffer to some of those guys, is how I would respond to that.
And I, I would want to go by an example, let's say an example. So let's say we have a, a machine shop with a small office that's existed in M1 zone. Somebody wants to come back and say, "Well, I, I want the building," and we've agreed to a price, "I just want to expand the office," and I may not have as much manufacturing, or any manufacturing in there, and say it's a, it's a pre-manufactured metal building, been there for however long. We have a lot of those. Because it's M1 zone, it requires a conditional use permit, so they'd have to go through the conditional use permit process just to get the office. But on top of that, after we approve the use here, and they think they're out of the blue, they, they come back with their plans and say, "Well, no, now you have to put facade, you have to put a masonry facade over this metal structure." You know, rather than just adding the two parking spaces, you need to meet code for this office use, now you've got a landscape across the entire site. Now you have to do, you got to take the dumpsters and screen them. Some of these things I think I would be okay with, the dumpster training, I think, for sure, and it's not really all that expensive to put a CMU wall around a dumpster. But it is pretty expensive to clad a metal building with masonry, and they're going to walk away. And I can tell you that, that's exactly what I would do if it was me, I would not buy that building. And now the owner's kind of screwed, for lack of a better word, because they thought he had a deal, and then the, the purchaser's got to go find something else over whether we wanted a building to have brick around it or not. You know, I think the parking is obvious, if you, if, if we're, if we're taking, if we're taking a higher use, not only the owners want to have more parking, but, you know, as a council member, I want to see them have parking, and I want to park on, I don't want them parking the street, but if we've got an old metal building in the back end of industrial road, which we have a lot of, do we care whether they switch uses, the use has a CUP, and then we make them put a bunch of trees on there? You know, I, I think that's where we're, we're running into, running into problems, because those issues, while they seem like, and the examples show, that they don't happen that often, they seem to happen a lot from our perspective, because we get a call nearly every time it happens. And I think the direction we're trying to get collectively is, what tools do we need to provide, and how do we need to process a discussion, so that staff has a better understanding of what council's will is, and how do we codify that, so the applicants have a better understanding of what council's will is? How do we get to that? Because as I see it, there is so much subjectivity in this UDC, even people who've dealt with this on a regular basis have a difficult time navigating it, and it tends to lead to frustration on all parts. I'm, I'm sure it's frustration on staff, too, because you all think it seems clear, and these guys are coming in, "That's not how I interpret it," and it's frustrating for everybody. So...
So could we be on, safe to say that we would just scratch facade from number four?
I'd say facade and landscape buffers is for a change of use.
Those are two things, landscaping and buffers, they're not landscaping buffers. Take an example like a '70s model convenience store turned into a tile outlet. You see a lot of issues with parking, for one, two different, three different uses of parking, and, and the facade itself. I could support that number four in that case.
Can I speak then to four as related maybe to two? For looking at a, a situation maybe in the future where you've got a business, if we ever go to having like, trying to create like a downtown area, or, you know, looking at what's considered old Pearland. I know that there's a trend, maybe in some other areas, and I can't think of any examples here, but where a business would go into, an existing business that's been a community for a long time, that the actual look and feel of that building has significant historical value to the community, where we would be kind of forcing that, that change, I don't know if there would be any way to, to allow us to preserve maybe some of that historic feel to some of these buildings, if somebody wanted to come in, and let's say there was a bank, and they wanted to put a restaurant in a bank, or something like that, and kind of keep the look and feel of the bank for historic value, I don't know if, that would obviously be pertaining to four and two, if, let's say the bank was built prior to 1981, and it was just kind of a landmark. I know.
I can understand for number four, where we would maybe want to look at, at buffers, especially on change of use of, of a facility. If it went from, you know, I don't know, say, a daycare or something like that, to something, I don't know, that was not as friendly to the, the neighbors, I could understand providing a, a buffer there, but some of the, I mean, like I said, facade and landscaping, I, I don't know that I, I agree with that.
Ask for any further questions or comments? Mr. Chairman, let me let you and P&amp;Z tune in on this.
I'll start with Mary.
Well, to start, I agree with the percentages that the council has brought up. There's got to be, on this change of use, a lot of the uses that have been brought up, have been brought up that they probably wouldn't change from one of those to the one that they suggested, because the zoning probably isn't correct. You've got to remember where these are going, a lot of these are going to be, so a change of use really should not trigger a complete change in the whole property. It depends on how it's zoned and what they want to put there, and if it really fits. Facade changes are very expensive. We need to keep as many of the small businesses in town as we can, so what we need to do is make it as easy for them to expand as possible, and we've just got to work on it until we come up with a good way to do it.
I kind of think this is a lot to go through in one night. The one that worries me the most is the change of use, more intensive uses, bring more traffic, bring more problems, especially for the neighbors. I think that, especially in like a general commercial, where there's a large variety of things that you can put there, that one gives me a little heartburn. I, I'm not as worried about the facade. It's my two cents.
Lani?
The only thing, number two, I thought was all-inclusive, anything built prior to 1981, the only thing I thought of is, like, the building with the mural painted on it. I mean, that building's pre-1981 for sure. Would that, is that something that would be included, is graphics, stuff like that, part of that? I think number two might need to be less vague, possibly, I don't know. That's the only thing that came to mind on that. Everything else that came to mind has been brought up.
I agree with Mary, as far as, this is a start, but one of the things that I've heard from different people in the, in the community and stuff, is how hard it is to do business in Pearland a lot of times. And, you know, at first, I kind of laid it off on, you know, we were, we were being stricter because we wanted to have a certain, a certain way that our town was structured. But we've got existing businesses, and it seems like that when they want to make, make upgrades and stuff, in the past, it's been hard for them to navigate this. I think that, I think what you are doing is a good thing, but I also think that change of use, striking the landscaping and the facade would be something that, that I'd be in favor of.
I'm definitely in favor of some of the changes here outlined by staff. If I could just speak on the process, it would probably help the process if planning and zoning was allowed to have a workshop on, on these changes prior to we, to us coming to the joint public hearing, and for a vote later in the commission on this, because we come here and discuss it more like a workshop, and we end up in the P&amp;Z meeting, looking at this and trying to figure out what council directed us to do just hours or minutes ago. And when we lump them all into, into one big batch, it, it makes it even harder to, to go through. We could do these individually, as individual items, it would probably help go through the, the UDC changes that, that we have. I know this was initiated by, by council, and it would just help, I know staff's probably worked on it, but if we could get some input in a, in a workshop with P&amp;Z before we come here, it would probably help massage some of the items out, and we can talk about what we discussed with council in, in this forum. That's just an idea. And as far as the process, and speaking of, of what Trent mentioned, throughout planning and zoning meetings, we, we uncover things that, that may need a change or an update, and petition for those in our meetings for changes to the UDC. I think that's a process that we need to work out, and use the planning and zoning's time in our meetings to help the process, make the UDC better, and not muddle through some of the things that have been the same forever, and, and are causing problems. If they're causing a problem to developers and to businesses, we need to deal with them quickly, and the commission can help do that, if we, if we know what those are. Any further comments? That completes our comments, Mayor.
That completes your comments of that. Okay. You know, the UDC planning triggers, of course, do not necessarily show up on a, on a brand-new facility and for a specific use, but where you have buildings that have getting rather old, and businesses, and the, the use of the facility has changed, and you start making corrective, enlarging and making changes on, so you've got to have some kind of gadgets. And I think it's been a good workshop on this, and I believe we've, we've got, getting a better feel for the, how we're going to handle older buildings, older uses, or new buildings, or upgrades, and sometimes the use of the facilities in Pearland has changed considerably, because recently we've just required and permitted liquor stores, and, you know, society changes, and the use of our city and facilities change, so I think it's been a good, good exercise. So that information wrapped up, let's move to item number five, let's me adjourn this particular item. And if you will remember, when I started out, that I said that if you're here for item 1800014, which is a storage facility on Ola Drive, that has been canceled, and the city council will wrap up their goods and step down, and the planning commission will take over as we leave. So at this point, we will move. Thank you so much for being here, and...